I'd like to call to order the Bucksport Town Council meeting for Thursday, November 8th, 2018. Road call, please, Kathy.
Mark Isling.
Here.
Paul Rads.
Here.
David Keen.
Here.
Peter Stewart.
Here.
Paul Goggin.
Here.
Okay, we're going on to presentation of any town council recognitions. I don't believe we have any tonight, but we are going to bring an item that normally would be under Item 13. We're going to bring that up now so this gentleman doesn't have to stay here all night. Mr. Manton?
Manard.
Manard, excuse me. She told me three times, too.
Mine's easy. I just have to come up and say thank you. I leased the hayfield. The hayfield is still -- I have to do a report here. The hayfield is still doing well. I'll get the equipment out next week, just because it's been raining. And if there's any questions, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't think the council ever got flowers before. We've got things thrown at us, but not flowers.
Do I look like a hero when I go home?
You have anything else to say, or?
That was it.
This is just a thank you?
It's just a thank you. I had to give my report. There were 671 bales this year. I was late getting in there, but I've got one more year.
Okay.
That was it.
All righty.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, we are on Item 4 now, considered minutes of previous meetings. We have the minutes from October 11th, 2018, Finance Committee meeting. We've got minutes from October 11th, 2018, Infrastructure and Property Committee meetings, and October 11th, 2018, Service Community Meeting minutes. How would the council like to proceed?
Most approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve all the minutes presented. Anything further from the public? Council, all those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Moving on to Item 5, receive and review correspondence and documents. First one being Maine Municipal Association Due Reduction Letter.
Yes. Maine Municipal is restructuring their due system for member communities. And our 2018 dues were $7,254, and our estimated 2019 dues will be $5,305. And that Maine Municipal is the entity through which we purchase health insurance for our employees and through which we are able to access property and casualty insurance, workers' compensation insurance, who do our safety programs and training, and also through which we are able to get legal assistance on questions that are matters of law, not specifically he said, she said, shad, he said, she said, but pertaining to legal opinions, we use them as well. So this reduction in dues, considering all that we use, is a good thing.
Thank you. Next item, Down East transportation ridership report.
Yes, you have the shuttle, the bus ridership report, as well as the taxi, which is the partner to that, that weekly program to allow people who are not in the immediate downtown area to be able to gain access as well.
Any questions from the public on either of those items? From the council? If we want to Item 6, ordinances to be considered or introduced. I don't believe we have any. Item 7 is discussion items for managers' clarification or direction for council discussion. First one being Infrastructure and Property Committee meeting for November 8th, 2018. Who's the chairman of that? Hang on a minute.
We had three agenda items today. First one was regarding bids to purchase the MAP-52 lot 20. We had three bids, and the high bidder was Troy Sheen for $5,007, and the committee has recommended we approve that. The second item is annuals purchase, extensive bid process resulted in the low bid of $202,000, something like that, right?
202, 203.
202, 203. I won't point the details on the whole bid process, but it was extensive. They had ended up with five responses back. The low bid included a warranty that others didn't include, and there were no exceptions to the requirements and specifications there. So it is A, B, and the same company we have other vehicles, professional vehicles, American emergency vehicles, was the low bidder. And that is coming out of the reserve funds, moved from other reserve accounts into the ambulance reserve funds. And the last item on the agenda was Wilson Hall, discussions on Wilson Hall. Committee was basically just looking at where we go from here, where we, after the potential contractor and that project fell through, where do we go with Wilson Hall? So we sort of brainstormed a number of different things. We had some suggestions that we get an estimate of whatever cost to tear it down, an estimate for putting a roof over, a metal roof on it to basically keep the water out. Reminded, we were reminded by a co-forceman officer that it is stable, but it's the water that is continuing to do damage to the building. Discussion on how long we go forward with this process, how long we hang on. We heard from some of the public comments about getting to the point of making decision, comments regarding basically promoting tearing it down. So in the end, we came around to a recommendation to the council that we put it on the agenda. We public, we get the, dust off the numbers that we had for and contact the vendors for tearing it down, to give us prices to tear it down, see what those are, look at the numbers we had for the roof, just make that available for people, publicize the meeting, either the last meeting, and I don't know if we decided on the last meeting in November or the first in December, but some meeting in the near term where we bring that all up, we allow public comment, and then we take a vote as a council on what we're going to do with the building. Did I summarize that correctly?
Mm-hmm.
So that's our recommendation to the council.
Thank you. Any comments from the public on any of those topics? Yes, sir?
Just Don White, Tom Farm Road. Before the Dick Campbell situation, his attempt to make a taxpaying situation out of that thing, there was some conversation about preservation in town, some considerable conversation. Is that conversation still alive? There was some conversation about grant writings that were, I think Main Street Bucksport had that idea. I just throw that out because it sounds like it's getting dire here. And if there is any attempt to preserve Wilson Hall, I would like to have that voice at least be heard.
It sounds like everybody's going to have to anyone to get you data.
Yeah. I didn't know where that was, because that was considerable discussion before the Mr. Campbell situation.
Any other comments? Yes, sir?
Also, while the committee was meeting, Rich Rotella did say that there had been a couple of break-ins within the past month or so.
Okay, if there's no comments, we'll go on to the next item. Social service agency policy recommendations from the Finance Committee. David, you, or Susan?
The, at the last, prior to the last council meeting, the Finance Committee continued discussing the non-municipal organization funding evaluation policy that has been under discussion for some time. And this is on the agenda tonight, not for a vote. This is to report out what the committee has done, and then the council can decide if you want to agenda it for a vote or further discussion or whatever. This is just the committee's report, which, the initial portion, which was the application process and the development of evaluation criteria, has pretty much been set for some time that the committee was comfortable with. The discussion that has taken an extended amount of time relates to what, if any, kind of a cap there should be on these on an annual basis. And at the last meeting, the consensus of the majority of councils and attendants was that that should be an amount not to exceed 1% of the prior tax year commitment, which is consistent with what the council funded in this year's budget from tax appropriation. The remainder of it, as I said, of the policy talks about the manner in which the council evaluates requests and what the priorities for receiving funding are and what the requirements are. One, that you have to show up, and though I let sound silly, the council has had many requests at times where they just get letters and no one comes. And so that it would, attendance would be required, and that the organizations have to have a direct connection to this community, and priority is given to those that are in this community and are doing service that's consistent with the town's comprehensive plan, consistent with the heart and soul statements that we accepted as part of this. So all of that, as I said, was, I think, seen by the committee as a way to quantify what they were being required to do. And the discussion of what the right cap number is, as I said, has taken a good deal of discussion. But the current output was 1% consistent with this, and it's based on the prior year's tax commitment, because that way you know going into a budget what that number is, you're not doing it and then waiting for the end. So that's, this is just an explanation of the policy, and the council, the only decision you would need to make is whether you want to move that forward for action on your next agenda, or where you want to take this policy that's come back from finance.
And the recommendation was that the amount remain the same as last year?
That's right. The percentage, yes.
I'd make a motion that we vote on the next council meeting so that we can prepare for the going to the next budget season.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to set the limit on social service agency policy at 1% of the previous year's tax.
No, they're just, their motion is to put this item on the next agenda.
Okay.
Is that, did I get that right?
Okay, we have a motion and a second to put this item on the next council meeting's agenda. Anything from the public? Anything further from the council? Now, does this, is that, sets it as the maximum, but if, say, half the agencies don't show up?
You don't have to, it's just a cap. It's not a minimum.
Okay. Okay. Anything further from the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes? Okay, we're going to go on to agenda items. First one being to approve resolve IR 2019-21, to approve the purchase of new ambulance.
Most approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve the resolve 2019-21 for new ambulance. Anything further from the public? From the council?
I need to accuse myself of this vote.
Okay. And this is all coming out of a reserve?
Yeah, the money was moved from reserve accounts that we aren't using anymore.
Okay. Any further from the council?
I have one question. How long will it take you to get it?
Four to six months.
And are you retiring one of them, or are we going to have four now?
Well, you could use the fours, though, couldn't you?
It's still usable. We'll have some discussion. There's no plan at this time to keep four, but three, three of them are out quite often.
Because I think the last time we purchased one, the third one, was going to be used possibly for transports. Is that, is that taking place?
We haven't doing that yet. We wanted to get the employee situations squared around, and we're having some conversations at this point.
Any other comments from the council? Yes, sir?
Do you have any, how difficult would it be to sell it, the one, the fourth one?
It's not worth it. It's pretty hard to get anything for used emergency vehicles, especially with 160,000 mile a year. We have thought about guns and hoses vehicle. We'll talk about that later.
That's a good idea.
Any other thing, comments from the council?
It's four to six months before you have to think about which one.
All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Item B, to approve resolve IR 2019-22, to approve the sale of lot 20, MAP-52.
Most approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve the resolve. Anything further from the public? From the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Item C, to approve resolve IR 2019-23, to approve treatment plant solar project contract with Revision Energy. Susan, you want to make any comment on this?
This, this, the council talked about this some time ago, and approved the use of our remaining grant funds, a large percentage of them, from this project to install a solar array at the treatment plant to offset the extremely high cost of electricity for all the motors, fans, et cetera, that run that place. And we went through a bid process. It was an engineered and designed, we went through a bid process, we received one bid that was received timely. A second bid was submitted, but it was, it was beyond the time, that time limit, and our engineers who did the bid process checked with RDA, the funding agency, as to whether we could accept that second bid, and they clearly stated that we could not, that the rules of the bid were such that it had to be what it was. So while there was a second bid, it was not allowed to be considered for this project. Revision Energy, the proposal that was timely was reviewed by our engineers and by RDA and deemed to meet the qualifications and is well within the funding available for the project and allows for, if the council wishes, the additional, there can be more solar arrays at the site than was originally planned for because the bid came in at what it did. So the approval tonight is the contract with revision for this project so that we can move this forward. But this is something that we've been talking about for two and a half years during the life of this project, wanting, working really hard to ensure that there were no cost overruns and that we didn't end up using the contingency for things that would not have a long-term benefit for the community. The installation of this solar array, solar array and the payment of the grant funding for the purchase of the equipment makes it an immediate benefit, because there's no repayment of principal on the equipment to do it, which is generally what takes a while to make solar effective. We get the benefit on an immediate basis based on the fact that it's grant monies that's been being used to use it, and it won't just save the project 20,001 year, it'll save the project, or save the operation of the facility, that 20,000 every year for the life of the, of the plant, and that becomes substantial when you consider what our sewer rates and that even four years out now, we've not had to have another rate increase. So this helps to further stabilize that for longer explanation than anyone wanted, but this is a big project for the town, and it's been a long time in the works that the council has indicated support for wanting to utilize those grant funds in a way that just wasn't buying a snow blower or doing something that really, you know, these small kind of fit and start things that would have no lasting positive effect on this.
And in round numbers, how much rural development grant funds will be left after we make this purchase? And more importantly, is there a use or lose window we have to worry about?
There were two, three other, we are also with reserve purchasing backup pumps for the pump stations by Hannaford, and there's one other item, again, a long-term. So the, by the end of this, there should be zero, because there's no, there's no giving it, giving it back doesn't get you anything. It doesn't reduce your loan. We can't apply it to the principal. It's a, if we don't use it, somebody else will get it, and the solar project can use what's not necessary to purchase the redundancy for pumps that we also need.
Revision, that's the same company that quit, okay. Thank you.
Okay, how would the council like to proceed?
Motion approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the resolve for solar project at the wastewater treatment facility. Any further comments from the public?
Will we, will we own those? Will we own those towns?
Yes.
Don?
You want me up here, David?
Yeah. We're not getting your face on the camera.
Thanks, David. Great job. This is terrific for the town of Bucksport, I think, to move in this kind of direction. It makes sense from every, every possible angle you look at it, I think. I would ask the council to continue to keep, keep solar energy in mind. I think Revision is doing some outstanding work with some of the other towns. And the town of Elliott this week has signed a new contract with them, and I would ask you to take a look at this project, see how it works, see how you work with them and others. But the, behind the transfer station, we've brought this up before to you, is a, is a possible site where you could engage them in conversation whether it makes sense for the town to do either a municipal project there or a combined private and municipal project. Some people do it where you allow private citizens to buy into a field. So, and I know Revision has experience doing this kind of thing. So I want to thank you for, for moving in this, in this direction, and hopefully we keep moving this way. Thanks.
Any other comments from the public? From the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Item D, to approve resolve 2019-24, to approve sewer commitments for the period of 7/1/18 to 9/30/18.
Motion approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the sewer commitments for a period of 7/1/18 to 9/30/18. Anything further from the public? From the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Item E, to approve resolve IR 2019-25, to approve the sale of lot 2, MAP-4. How would the council like to proceed?
It's MAP-4 lot 2-1, just to be.
It's the one we discussed the last.
It's the one you discussed at the last council meeting, but the, it should be four, if we sell MAP-4 lot 2, the guy that owns it's going to be really upset. But MAP-4 lot 2-1 is the one that is.
Motion approve.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolve for lot 2-1, MAP-4. Anything further from the public? From the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Okay, item F, to approve resolve IR 2019-26, to abate 2015 personal property taxes for two accounts. Susan?
We have two accounts, Automatic Vending and Games and Main Street Sitco from 2015. Businesses are not here. There's not a way for us to recover these funds, and they are outstanding in the amount of $53.73, and I'm asking that we abate those so that they're not collectible.
Motion approve. Second. We have a motion and a second to abate 2015 property taxes. Anything further from the public? From the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Item G, to approve resolve 2019-27, to purchase ballistic vests for the police department. Sean? Chief?
We are due in our CIP this year to replace ballistic vests, and we're looking at actually purchasing 13 vests this year, something that we've never done, because we have never bought vests for our reserve officers, which I've always agreed with. Sergeant Winchester's got two grants that are vest grants, and the patrol officers and we've met, met with different companies, tried on samples, and they've come up with a vest that can be purchased by the grant, because the BJA grants are very specific in what you can buy. These vests that they're looking at do qualify. Our vests are due to be replaced this year, I believe it is, because they're good for up to five years. And the vest quote that they got from the Skyboro Company was $10,140. We had budgeted for $10,000 in the CIP program. Between the two vest grants, there's $4,975, so that would allow us to spend, only spend $5,164 of the $10,000 we budgeted for the vests.
Motion approve. Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the resolve for the purchase of ballistic. Go ahead.
I'm talking to her, we're good. We wouldn't have an eye come to.
That's for the police department. And any further from the public?
You got other things we need to buy with that?
Well, no, I've got another Burn Jag grant that I'm going to discuss another night. I want to research it a little bit further before, yeah. We have more grant money to spend, so.
All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, chief. Okay, we're going on to item nine, resignations, appointments and assignments, and elections. All done elections. Okay, I guess there's nothing under that. Item 10, approve quick claim discharges and deeds. We have a correction for sewer lien for Guy Abatoni at 42 Pine Street. Susan?
This, we had, this is a correction of a quick claim deed that we had done that had the incorrect information on it. So if that was done, it got recorded, it needs to be corrected. This is not something new. This is a correction of an action that you took some time ago, so it's just a, you just need, need to approve this corrected quick claim deed for the Abatoni property.
Most approve. We have a motion and a second to approve the correction for sewer lien for 42 Pine Street. Anything further from the public? From the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Item 11, Town Managers Report.
Nope, that switches. Okay, on Monday, November 12th, they'll be flying to Charlotte, North Carolina to participate as a speaker in the Innovation Show. as a speaker in the Innovation Showcase at the AARP Livable Communities Conference. The Show You Care Program, which is a collaboration between the Bucksport Bay Healthy Communities Coalition, Senior Resource Committee, the Bucksport Bay Area Chamber of Commerce, and the town of Bucksport, was selected as one of eight programs across the country to be presented as part of a session at the conference. It's called the Innovation Showcase, and it's a very short presentation each, but it's still an honor to have been selected. The trip expenses are paid by AARP for the hotel, flight, all of that. I am honored to go and represent the program as a way of bringing further positive attention to the good work being done and being recognized in this community, and I was at, the Senior Resource Committee people in my mind should be the ones going, but they asked me to go and represent them, so I'll be attending that if there's, I had to do a, a short slideshow and a discussion, and I provided that information to them. Okay, last night, the Adapt AIM Development Action Plan for Tomorrow Final Plan was presented at the Performing Arts Center by the town, Elan Consulting, the EPA and Eastern Main Development Corporation, and what was presented last night was an overview. The entire plan can be found on the town website, as well as on the Adapt Bucksport website. This work is important for this community. The work done on this plan incorporates not only the former mill site, but also connects that development to the rest of the community. This plan will provide necessary planning documentation for applications for grants to do the work that's outlined in the plan. Granting agencies will not fund projects in which there has been no significant planning prior to the application. The diversity of this plan and the numerous development opportunities that it discusses will position this community well as we move forward with implementation, and I want to thank everyone who worked on this plan and its development, and invite you all to help as we move forward with the implementation. As to solid waste, MRC, Fiberite and recyclables, at the most recent meeting of the MRC Board of Directors, it resulted in a timeline for completion of the Fiberite facility in Hampden. That timeline includes the installation of the MRF component of the facility and acceptance of waste. And despite the fact that the Fiberite facility is not yet online and the town is transporting its waste to EMR in Southwest Harbor for eventual disposal at Norwich Walk, the town is being reimbursed for the additional haul time as compared to a trip to Hampden so that we are not paying more than our contract with Fiberite defines. And in addition, while many other communities have stopped recycling and are now disposing of all of the, their recyclables as solid waste to avoid the, the higher cost of recycling due to the fact that markets in China have disappeared, I am not at this time recommending that Bucksport stop its recycling efforts. As shown on a recent Channel 7 series, when it comes online, the facility in Hampden will provide a more comprehensive way to utilize and process recyclables, and in the meantime, we have educated our residents as to the importance of waste separation and install zero sort recycling to make that easier, and I do not think it isn't in the best interest of this community to go backward. So, I'm sure you've heard of other communities that are, are giving up recycling for the time being and instructing their residents to dispose of it all as waste, I'm not recommending that we do that at this time. Next, we had some damage from the windstorm recently, if you noticed, our sign out front is missing, and it was badly damaged, and we also had damage to the gangway for the town dock. We have ordered a new sign from Banner City for the town office, and our Marina manager and harbor master, Mike Ormsby, will meet, be making repairs to the gangway railings that were damaged when it literally was picked up and tossed, if you can imagine. Anyway, so he'll be making those repairs. And finally, I would like to congratulate town clerk Kathy Downs and her crew for the exceptional election that they ran on Tuesday. They have had a number of people stop by to compliment Kathy and her workers, and I want to echo those compliments. Elections have turned into something for the town clerk, which is a year-round process to get ready for these elections, and she's highly professional, but she's also highly approachable, and I had so many people tell me how smoothly things went, even though it was a very busy day, so thank you Kathy. We are good. Well, I should talk about it, well, it wasn't on the agenda. The Regulatory Review Committee also met this evening, and that's not under, not on under updates, but, and they met to discuss the weight limits on trucks, or weight limits on roads that we have in our existing ordinance and some potential different language, and the outcome of that meeting was that, and that, and that, the next, prior to the next council meeting, meeting will be scheduled, people will be notified who live on those roads so that they can attend, and pit owners and commercial users in Bucksport will also be notified so that they can be there for a discussion as well, so that all parties who could be impacted by any changes to these weight limits on roads can be present for the discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I got my... Well, to set public hearings or hold public hearings or approve any licenses or permits, I don't believe we have any, we have license permits, we don't have any public hearings to set. Okay, we do have three licenses requests here, first would be a miscellaneous license for Chris Grindel and Rich Rotella for the Holiday Lights Parade for December 8th at 5:00 PM. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and second, the license for the Holiday Parade of Lights. Anything further from the public? From the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. The next one being food service license for Peter Napoli, doing business at McDonald's Restaurant. This is a change in ownership. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion.
Okay. We have a motion and second to approve the food service license for McDonald's Restaurant. Anything further from the public? The council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Last one is a liquor license and special amusement and food service license for Dino Kismatakis, doing business at Bucksport House of Pizza. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Second. We have motion and second to approve the license for Bucksport House of Pizza. Any further from the public on this one? Okay, this is a liquor license. Okay, anything further from the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Okay.
It should have a number, but it doesn't, it just, it just...
Discussion items not on the agenda, the council or public. We have one, I'll, I'll open it to the public first. Any discussion items from the public? Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Michael Fitch, Jr., and I am a resident of 26 Broadway here in beautiful Bucksport. As a matter of fact, Councilman Eastman sold me the home, so thank you very much, great, great decision. And before I begin, I want to be very brief. The first thing I want to say is just thank you for what you've done to guide such a beautiful town. We are expecting our first child in April, and I can't think of a better town to raise my children in, so thank you, thank you very much. I read an article in the Ellsworth American that was produced last year regarding an ordinance on the sale of retail marijuana, and just very briefly, I'll just quote from that quickly. The ordinance follows a six-month moratorium on retail marijuana that began this winter. The moratorium allowed the town planning board some time to look more closely at how other states such as Colorado and Washington have reacted to legal retail marijuana. And this is the important part here, the results of the study were inconclusive, and the planning board received very little public comment for or against the moratorium. Now, I wasn't actually at that event, so I can't speak to what happened on the ground, but the only information that I'm operating off of was from that article, that there was very little feedback given either for or against the moratorium. So as a resident of Bucksport and someone who believes that being civically involved is a good way to get back to the community, for what it's worth, I thought I would present a few arguments why I believe that the medicinal, definitely medicinal and the retail sale of marijuana should be something that's allowed in Bucksport, and I'll give four very brief points on that. So the first point would be, from my interaction with folks in town, I won't name any names, but some, you know, volunteer community groups that we have, there are several terrific ones, I keep hearing this idea of how can we bring people to Bucksport? How can we bring people to Bucksport? So in, in my opinion, banning an entire industry does the exact opposite of trying to bring people to Bucksport in two main ways. The first way would be that those who are seeking to buy non-habit-forming medicines such as marijuana, they're going to go to Bangor, they're going to go to Ellsworth, they're going to go to Belfast. We are surrounded by cities that already sell this, but you can't do it in Bucksport. So that's ensuring that, that revenue, that tax revenue, and all the other business that goes alongside with that is going to other cities besides, besides Bucksport. Secondly, anyone in Bucksport who wants to purchase legally, you know, through an actual card, non-habit-forming pain relief, has to get in their car, and it's not that far away. I mean, I've, I've talked to folks in Greenville who have to drive, you know, two hours to get this stuff, because they don't want to take Percocets, they don't want to take Oxy Cotton, those are very dangerous habit-forming substances. But they still, it's still true, they have to get in their car, they've got to drive one hour round trip, and then when they stop, they're going to go get their gas in Bangor, Ellsworth, Belfast, they're going to eat at their restaurants. A lot of that business and revenue is leaving Bucksport and not staying in Bucksport. Moving in, and all these I think are important to me, but moving in level of importance, I have a great amount of concern for people that I've encountered in the local community and across Hancock County, I was recently employed in the supplemental insurance industry, for people who have a very hard time paying for, for pain relief. I experienced a lot of people who didn't have insurance, weren't able to afford their medications, and it, it caused them quite a problem. Medicinal marijuana, not only is it a lot less expensive than some of these other, you know, opioids and opiates that people are prescribed legally and they purchase at pharmacies, but again, and this is what I hammer on, they're not, it's not habit-forming like those particular, those particular substances are. So it saves people money because the pain relief is a lot less expensive, and it doesn't lead people down a dark path that some of these other substances do. The third point I'd like to discuss is again, moving off of that, the opioid epidemic. By allowing medicinal marijuana, we make it more difficult for individuals to turn to these particular substances. I have information, I'm not going to present it, but I can, if requested, from the American Medical Association, looking at, you know, studies that were conducted in Colorado, studies conducted in Washington. Luckily, we can see this happening in other states, so we get to go off of their data, we don't have to kind of walk blindly into this. And the opiate use, the purchasing of it, and very specifically, the overdose of it drastically decreases. People do not overdose from medical marijuana, they do overdose from Percocets, all these terrible substances. So this is, could potentially be a life, a life-saving situation. And the final point that I'll, that I'll make, and again, I don't, I wasn't at that particular meeting, so maybe there's information that I don't have, so I'm only going off of the, the article in the Ellsworth American, but there was a, a discussion that, there was a problem with the way it was taxed, so if we were to sell that medicinal marijuana in the town of Bucksport, that the tax revenue, as I understand it, the argument was it wouldn't be coming back into the town, so Bucksport wouldn't, wouldn't actually benefit from that. So I, I did a brief amount of research into that, and I'd like to present my conclusion for that. So, the tax, according to Legislative Document 1527 relating to retail medicinal marijuana, if passed, would levy a special 20% sales tax on retail marijuana. 45% would go to the Bureau of Alcohol Beverages, Lottery Operations, 10% to the Department of Public Safety, 5% to Department of Health and Human Services, and the remaining 40% to the state's general fund. So I wanted to look in, into those particular destinations, that tax revenue and see, you know, what was included. So the Bureau of Alcohol and Beverages, Lottery Operations ensures licensing, licensing and safety of the businesses, which Bucksport takes advantage of. The Department of Public Safety, these public safety bureaus include the Capitol Police, Consolidated Emergency Communications, Main Criminal Justice Academy, Drug Enforcement, Emergency Medical Services, Fire Marshal's Office, Gambling Control, Highway Safety, and the Maine State Police, which I would argue that we do take, some, some benefit from, so funding those things is something that, that seems like it helps Bucksport. The Department of Health and Human Services, there was a very wide, long range of benefits and services from that particular department, and I couldn't present that, that long exhaustive list, but just to briefly mention a few child welfare programs, food, money and housing programs that are eligible to, to some Bucksport residences, residents, caregiver programs, mental health services, including suicide prevention services. And then finally, the general fund, so the portion that's of the tax of medicinal marijuana that goes to the general fund, it's divvied up in different ways, according to this research, 23.25% goes to Main Care, Medicaid, so those are services, I can, I can assure you, there are many people in our area who, who take advantage of those services, and 11.61% goes to the Department of Health and Human Services. So based upon this research, it seems that, you know, the way it is taxed in 1527 or Legislative Document 1527, the tax revenue does go to, to programs, it's more on a state level, so that argument's, I guess, I guess is valid, but it does go to fund particular programs that we can take advantage of. But if, if the, the issue, and I'll kind of end with this, I'm trying to be very brief, if the issue is regarding the taxation, the taxation is the problem, not the medicinal marijuana itself, but just the way it's taxed, I feel that it would be a more appropriate manner to deal with it by maybe, you know, adding an additional tax that goes specifically to something here in Bucksport to ensure that the town directly is benefiting from that. If this is, this is anecdotal, but this is why I'm very passionate about this. My stepfather went through triple RE bypass surgery, he was involved in Christian ministry, and then the number one activity of ours was dealing with substance abuse, and a lot of these individuals using substance, these substances were, they were medicines that he was able, that the individuals were prescribed, and it was that legal prescription of some of these opioids and, and opiates that led down a dark path. And now he's been prescribed Oxy Cotton, and he, he used it, and now, this is anecdotal, but he, he confesses that he, he had a hard time sleeping at night without the Oxy Cotton, and that, that tears me up. I, I get marijuana has a bad culture to it, and it's, it's a, it's a dirty word, but I would much rather have him and other people be able to consume medicinal marijuana than some of these more habit-forming substances. I think it leads to a safer community, and again, the tax revenue already, I do believe, goes to benefit Bucksport, but we could certainly maybe discuss some additional taxation to fund some other things. So it's very, I wanted to say thank you for, for listening, and yeah, so I would like to suggest the repeal of that moratorium and the allow of medicinal marijuana in the town of Bucksport. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, any other discussion items from the public?
I would like to add to his discussion. My name's Sean Westcott, I'm from Orland. I actually grow and produce products for my girlfriend, who is a medical marijuana patient, and this, this is no joke with the, with how effective this is, because she has something called Chiara Malformation, which is basically an inch of brain tissue sticking out from the base of her skull. The only way to treat it is brain surgery. It goes from problems just like, you know, darkened vision, all, all the way to full-blown seizures. And we were on the road to putting her, you know, on state assistance for her disability because of it, because it was getting to the point where she couldn't even drive. But I got her, we got her the prescription, and we started giving her the medications, and I have been able to back off all of her problems, pretty much. She gets some tremors sometimes and stuff like that, but the sale of this, you know, either way, I think it is kind of morally wrong to deny people access to healthy medication, and this is a great thing. And to add with like the opioid epidemic, there's a Genesis Farms up in, it's either Hope or Harmony, which is actually using rosin, which is naturally just heat-pressed right out to be able to treat opioid withdrawals and addiction, and they had about a 75% success rate in the article that I saw so far. But, and the money that it could bring to this town is immense, not just with the sale of the flower, there are a lot of growers around here, and I hate to say it, but Jerry lost my business when he changed his name because he took away the Fox Farm line of nutrients. You know, you could, you could have money coming You know, you could, you could have money coming in from hydroponics, you could have greenhouses if you wanted to have somebody move in for a huge setup, and it would be a wonderful boost to our economy also. But it would be awesome if we could get that removed, so people can have access to this medication. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna suggest that maybe we revisit this issue, um, and put it on the agenda at some point for further discussion. Um, I think that it's, uh, it's worth that for medicinal marijuana, um, I think it's something that, and I, I'm trying to recall, I think I voted against it, but I think, uh, I think it's something that could use some additional discussion by this council.
Any other discussion items from the public? From the council?
Um, two things very quickly, um, I don't know, the mayor, the, um, our town manager was, uh, didn't, didn't talk about this, but this thing with AARP is a pretty big deal, it's a pretty big deal that our town manager was invited to discuss this, and I think the part of it was, they want to know a little bit about how Bucksport did it, when you, uh, lose, uh, forty percent of your tax base, and seems to be recovered, recovering as well as we have, so I think that's quite an honor that, uh, our town manager would be one of the few chosen to speak there. And the final thing I've got is, I wanted to compliment the, I think it was six people that ran for the town council. Uh, it takes a lot of guts to put yourself out there, let the voters take a look, had it, we had a, uh, contestant's night, uh, discussion, and, uh, I think that, that's good, and I encourage more people to run for public office. Put yourself out there and see what you can do. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to thank, I'm sorry, anyway, just, uh, thanks, Susan, for the, uh, the article in response to regarding Whole Oceans, extremely well-written, and hopefully it sends a message that, um, we can figure out things for our town and, and by ourselves and do the right thing and don't need other people taking their nose.
The, what Counselor Carmichael is referring to is an op-ed letter that, um, I wrote and distributed to every newspaper that I could think of, um, following the, um, Whole Oceans wastewater discharge permit application to DEP, had a thirty-day public comment period, and in reading the comments that were received, some of them, um, were from people with real questions that I know the answers to, and I know that DEP can respond to as part of their response to comments, and, and that's the purpose of public comments, but there were a number of comments from residents of another community which really are about killing this project and the one in Belfast. And so, the op-ed was printed in the Republican Journal yesterday afternoon, in the heart of the community where the comments came from, and the discussion in the op-ed, and you can read it on that, is that, um, Bucksport is a community of involved, environmentally-conscious, caring individuals who are working on its own future, and that it is disappointing and frustrating when those with no stake in, in that development and no, um, interest in this community would seek to kill such a project. Um, so I wrote the, and they published it, and, um, I appreciate that. I think it's important that the community assert its rights to determine its future without those, um, who don't have an interest here, or, uh, or the advantage of having all the information related to this project to simply try and kill it, so. That's what he's talking about.
Peter?
Um, I just want to say thank you to Chief Gagin and, and Chief Bowden. There was an incident last week that affected the town, blocked the road off Halloween night, it was several hours, and it ended the way it smokes down, uh, and I want to thank you guys for, for being there and doing those right things. Last night, um, Sue recognized Rich. Um, I also want to recognize Rich, that the ADAP plan started in twenty-seventeen, we had Main Maritime, and we had Whole Oceans before ADAP got here. Um, and, and, and when we decided to hire an economic development director in Rich, I think we all wondered, you know, I, is he gonna be able to get it done, is he gonna burn himself out? Um, I personally want to thank him, because I think he's been tireless in, in making these things happen around here and getting these things done, and I'm not a hundred percent sure that we give enough credit and enough help to what he does, so I think we need to make sure we look at that. Thanks, Rich.
Thank you. Well, I was thinking, I'm looking at here at, at a report from the Community Economic Development Director, Rich. Uh, basically, I asked him if he wanted to read this, and it just outlines what he has done in the past month, and, uh, I'm going, boy, uh, this is more than like two or three people would be doing. Uh, the meetings he goes to, the interviews, uh, and he also had jury duty to prove. He got a, a group of students raking leaves on Main Street, um, he attended eighteen different meetings, uh, spent, uh, Thursday and Friday, uh, with, uh, guest passengers of the MS Fram that was in here, the, the big passenger ship that was in town, basically, uh, being the tour guide for the community. I don't know if you want to say anything about that, uh, that opportunity, but also, uh, you know, he manages our waterfront, too. And, uh, you know, uh, I just want to let people know that bathrooms at both ends of the waterfront have been closed for the season, but, uh, the marina and the waterfront, uh, were just, it was a fantastic season, the, uh, coastal walkway's still open, uh, the marina and the, uh, the town docks, uh, had been removed. Um, I guess it was a very successful year at the marina. I want to thank Mike Owensby also for that, uh, he's got a wonderful job there, and, uh, sometimes I think Rich hates to take credit for some of the things he does, but, uh, he is a very important part of our revitalization in Bucksport through economic development. So, thank you, Rich. Any other, uh, discussion items, sir?
Yeah, uh, just, uh, two things. Last night, I attended part-time the, uh, ADAP, uh, presentation up at the Performing Arts Center. Today, actually, uh, on the town website, the, the full report is, uh, now there. Uh, a copy of the PowerPoint from last night is all up there. I've had the pleasure of reading all one-hundred-and-twenty pages of that report today. Uh, it really answers a lot of questions about, uh, timing, priority. It's, uh, one of the things that, uh, jumped off the page for me is that it's, it's current information, it's up-to-date, it's, I believe it's gonna be an exceptional tool, uh, going forward to, uh, get grant money, and there's a whole list, uh, just page after page in there where the grant money exists. Uh, again, page after page on the, uh, on the, on the priorities and so forth, so, uh, it, it, it wasn't all lights and sirens last night by any means, but please take a, uh, do some bedtime reading and take a look at that hundred-and-twenty pages, it's, uh, it's really an exceptional document that was done. And then I just do have one, uh, question for the town manager, and it's, after putting the solar array up on the DPW building, have we gotten any electric bills? Do we know what the impact will be?
The, the conversion of that account after all of that happened within the last thirty days, I don't have a new bill.
All right, we'll wait for the next meeting.
The sun hasn't come out for thirty days either, right?
It's raining every day, Sam.
There's a, uh, ten trajectory, there's actually a website that I was given, um, access to recently from Revision that shows how much, uh, we've, uh, gotten out of it already. It's quite impressive, and you can follow it.
So you have those numbers?
I do, but right now I couldn't tell you if it's Thursday or Friday. All right, I'll have, I'll have numbers ready for you the next time. And, and thank you all, I, I don't, I don't do this for, I, I do it because I love this town, and I love all you, and I swear I won't bang on the podium again, 'cause I know people at home can hear this. But, um, the waterfront, it, Mike and, and Bill were tirelessly, it's two guys who ran that marina all summer long. Uh, I went down as, as assistants, but those guys had the ins and outs, and every single weekend was covered. If either one of them got sick over the weekend, or I told them, if you need an extra set of hands, you know, I will, but they did it all. Ronnie, and Christian, and Trenton did a fantastic job on that waterfront, from the mowing to the trimming, to the trash, it's, this was, this was a stellar year on the waterfront. Cruise ship, uh, we've had close to thirteen thousand dollars in cruise ship revenue. That's, that's not bucks, that was three years' worth previous, was thirteen thousand. So we are becoming a destination, the tourists are staying, they're going to the fort, I know it's not in Bucksport, but the fort, there's no amenities there like they are here, so they come back, they're interested in our town. So, we are on the right path, and I want to thank you for your leadership and your guidance and believing in all of the staff here. So, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion items from the...
Uh, Mr. Mayor, there's still copies of Yankee Magazine with the fifteen-page spread on Bucksport, uh, in the bookstore at Hannaford's, and, uh, with its three thousand subscribers, uh, nothing but good stuff can come from that, I think.
Okay, part of this, uh, item also is we have to set, uh, committee assignments of, of meetings, and we have an infrastructure committee meeting to set? Who's the chairman of that?
We, there's infrastructure and regulatory review, but the bigger question right now is the next council meeting, because the next...
I was suggesting going to twenty-ninth.
The next council meeting would be the twenty-second, so, and that's Thanksgiving, so we're not doing this on Thanksgiving, so...
You're gonna cook for us. Yeah. What about your job assignment?
'Cause if we go to twenty-ninth, then it's the thirteenth after that, so we, we still, still be in that two-week period, and if we wait till the thirteenth of December, we have another one, that's all.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to move the second meeting in November to the twenty-ninth. All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes.
So...
Do we have to take something up, not on the agenda?
Uh, infrastructure and regulatory review will be scheduled for prior to that. Regulatory review related to the weight limits on roads and infrastructure and property in regard to Wilson Hall, is that?
So the idea that...
Or do you want, no, I'm sorry, Wilson Hall will be on the agenda, agenda, okay.
So we won't need an infrastructure?
Yes, Historical Society.
The Historical Society proposal, yes, that's, that would be infrastructure.
Want to do one of those, one of those half an hour ones? Yeah, so everybody's six to six-thirty?
Am I on any of...
What's that?
I was just asking if I'm on to you or one of those committees?
You're not on...
No.
Okay.
So what's that? One's gonna be at six, and then it's six-thirty?
Yes.
No, you're not.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, item fourteen is, uh, executive session, uh, we're going to, uh, talk about a, uh, enforcement action for the... Matter. Motion. Uh, I don't believe we're taking any action coming out of it.
I don't know. Jeff, the mayor was...
Will there be any action taken out of, coming out of that committee?
No.
Okay, so I'm gonna let them go. I need a motion to go into executive session.
Motion to go into executive session.
Okay, all those in favor? Opposed?
Oh, Rob has the right idea, those are right. Trouble, trouble is my wife, she's... Don't even, don't even think what mom be saying.
We don't, we have dishes, we don't...
They have zoning rules.
And we're not against that.
What do we do? Good.
Yeah, we ban just the five carriages, and I can, an individual can grow three or four vans, that's the way it's law, so.
We get an extensive...
This guy, this guy, he can over here, we're talking about...
We come over, you said, we tell you...